Hello, everybody. Welcome to Camel City Chat. I'm your host, John McPherson, and I'm joined by the honorable, see, I can say that, Jeff McIntosh, city councilman for the blank ward.
Northwest Ward.
Northwest Ward. Thank you for filling that one in there. Jeff is a fellow Realtor. He's been on Real Estate Radio with us in the past before, and just an all-around good guy that really cares a lot about our city. So I'm glad you're here. We're gonna, we're gonna get started on that, but I gotta do the obligatory that I didn't say that I was ever gonna do. And that is, please subscribe, like, and comment on our videos. We've got our channel here on YouTube. And greatly appreciate you watching with us this hump day, or whatever day you watch it. Jeff, you ready?
I'm ready.
You know, the three, I can't believe it. I said, you know, I'm gonna ask you this, I'm gonna do that. He goes, well, I know what three questions are. So it means a lot. It means a lot to me that you actually.
I'm sensing a Monty Python moment.
No, no, it means a lot to me that you actually know the questions ahead of time. So, alright, you ready?
Yes.
Where are you from? How long you been in Winston?
Born and raised at the Jersey Shore.
Okay.
Seaside Park, about a mile and a half from the infamous Jersey Shore House that was full of New Yorkers, by the way. Those weren't Jersey people. Born and raised there, moved down to Winston-Salem to go to Wake Forest in 1976. It met my criteria. It was academically quite a good place to go. It was relatively inexpensive. At the time, it was $3,500 a year room board tuition. And it was more than 300 miles away from home.
Okay.
So those were the things that I had to, had to fit.
So 1976. So you started in August. When did you graduate then?
1980.
Okay. So you were here when Wake Forest played LSU in the Tangerine Bowl in 1979?
Yes, indeed.
And I was at that game.
Tangerine Bowl. I was not. A bunch of my friends were. I couldn't make it.
And then we lost like 34 to 10 or something like that. But yeah, so, yeah, no, a friend of my brother's, Landon King, who is now a doctor in, at John Hopkins Lecture Teacher or whatever, was number 13. He's the guy that intercepted the ball against Carolina with a broken hand that season. Yeah. Jay Venuto, remember that? John Makovic, all the greats, yeah, so.
We did make it to the Orange Bowl, the year that Wake went to the Orange Bowl.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, well, that's good. Yeah. Three small oranges down on the field.
Indeed.
And I couldn't believe at the Love Out Loud thing that was earlier this month, the athletic director from Wake told us that, what was it? The Duke Carolina game, no, no, it was, I guess the Duke Carolina game had, you know, the number one premier matchup that everyone still watches, even with Carolina not being as good. So that game had less viewers than the, the bowl that Wake played football in. So it's like, you know, we have to capitalize on that stuff. I mean, you know, several, I mean, almost several million people watched Wake Forest play in that. So that was cool. Alright, question two.
Okay.
Favorite place to eat?
I'm gonna be a politician on this one, even though I don't have an opponent.
You're not running opposed. Oh, okay. So you know how I'm gonna trick you on this?
How?
Where is the last restaurant you and your beautiful bride Susan ate at?
Okay, so that's how I was gonna, I was gonna finesse this. My current favorite, right, for the last month and a half, we've been going to Quanto Basta.
Can't go wrong there.
Okay, so that, you know, Mella Mushroom, we love. Jeffrey Adams, we love. Mazel's is always a favorite. Philly Station. So, I mean, we tried, we do try to actually kinda change it up some, but my current favorite is Quanto Basta.
Have you been to the new Pope Bowl place? I know it's just.
I have not. I have not.
I've been eyeing that.
That's Dave, Dave Hillman of Brook Street and Quiet Pint.
Love Quiet Pint.
He does a really good job.
He does a good job, yeah.
He knows how to run a restaurant.
You know, this, this Vin place down the street here, we've started to go to when like everyone else is crowded, they usually are pretty, pretty good.
Now, aren't those the same guys who were getting ready to open the butcher, high-end butcher and restaurant on Broad Street?
It may be, yeah, because.
That was gonna, that was gonna be my surprise, you know.
Oh, so now you're trying to do Lou's thing. I saw it already somewhere. I think Smitty announced it.
I know. Jason Thiel threw it out. A couple people threw it out, so that was, that was.
That's right. It was Jason that said that.
So let me, let's go back to restaurants for a second, because I have.
The whole show's gonna be about restaurants, because I like to eat. So go ahead.
Me too, absolutely. So I've gone on, gone on two sort of tears for lunchtime things. I went through a period where I had to have pho at every place in town that did pho, Vietnamese, Vietnamese.
Right, so the only place I've gotten it in town is on Stratford.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever the name of that place is.
And I like theirs. I think theirs is high quality. There's a Malaysian restaurant out, Country Club and Peace Haven in the Harris Teeter Shopping Center.
Next to Rick Babuzzi at State Farm Insurance, located conveniently on Martin View Drive. Oh, there you go, Rick Early. Yeah, go ahead.
They, they serve a very good bowl.
It's like, it's a flower or something's in the name of it. I can't remember what the name of it is. Okay, right?
They're good. Thai Harmony downtown does, every Monday, they do a duck pho that is really good. It was really good. So anyway, I went through this period, sampled them all.
Right.
Then I went through a period where I was doing chicken wings.
Don't do the hot dogs thing. Now, I'll do the chicken wings thing.
Chicken wings was fun.
I haven't eaten a hot dog in probably two or three years now. I just gave up on them. I gave up on them. I'll do a brat, but I'm not a hot dog fan anymore. So where do we go chicken wings?
Well, the thing that was difficult about chicken wings is I got my two favorite sort of traditional buffalo chicken wings, right? And that's Real Q on Country Club, used to be Little Richard's. Across the street from Darrow's, across the street from East Coast Wings.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, no, okay, yeah.
Their traditional buffalo wings are really, really good.
Okay.
And then Burke Street has really good traditional buffalo.
Burke Street does, yeah. And so when you said across, I was thinking, so right next to Marco's Car Wash?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Alright, so Ronnie's, like Ronnie's, but Ronnie's.
I don't get that far west. I mean, I'm, I know.
I understand. So I do like Ronnie's. You know, there's always, they're too small, they're too whatever. I'll tell you a place, it's, it's a chain. But try the bee sting at Hickory Tavern.
Okay.
And get them, get them crispy. They're pretty good. So they do with a, like a honey and they're, and they're hot, but they're good.
Camel City Barbecue has really good smoked, but it's a different, it's a different wing.
What about Bibbs? Bibbs, you know, you go get chicken wing, you and I get chicken wing, it's the size of this. You go to Bibbs and it's like this freaking big. It's got the wing, it's got half the back on it.
Camel City's got a big serving too. Foothills does a smoked wing that's really good.
I'm trying to think of where else down that we've gone. So I've been there. Of course, Quiet Pint has good wings too. I love wings. So if you wanna do that again, yeah, I mean, I'm in on that.
The Sleeper is this little place, it's the bowling alley off of Peter Creek Parkway, just south of I-40.
So you're talking down near the McDonald's?
Yeah.
Park, Parkway Lanes, right?
Yeah, Parkway Lanes.
You know, another good place, the reason why I looked at you perplexed on the first one was, I was thinking that you were thinking about the place that's right there near Trey Nani's in that Jones Town Shopping Center.
Right.
They do good wings, but I can't remember what the name of that place is. And they do a special day that they do like a discount price.
That's, that's fun. I mean, I like to do sort of those.
Sounds like you and I have created a new, a new, a travel across America, test every wing.
Indeed.
Alright, so the third question.
Yep.
This one's easy for you. What's your favorite thing to do?
My favorite thing to do is read Smitty's notes to find out what's going on in the weekend. No, I mean, seriously, there's so much stuff going on. So, you know.
Did you see that Facebook post the other day where, is it Devin that's at Sika? And she posts that, that's, you know, that's not a man, that's a mask.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta go see that. That was creepy. You know, so Sika, but go ahead.
So we, Susan and I really do try to hit as much as we can. You know, it's like, if you're bored in Winston-Salem, you're not making the effort to find out what's going on. There is so much going on every weekend. And the Arts Council's always doing stuff. You know, Aperture Theater, we both love. There's just tons of stuff. We try to get to Sika as often as possible. Rinalda House, Sawtooth Galleries, you know, Milton Road Center, you know.
And, and then, you know, you get into Old Salem too, and you've got the, the furniture thing, which I'm not a huge fan of. You know, one of my favorite things to do is go to Rinalda House and just look at the toys with my daughter.
Yeah.
You know, up on the third floor.
The thing about Old Salem, I'm glad you brought that up, but if you haven't walked, just walked the streets, get off the square, and just kinda walk through the back streets over there. There's a, there's a bed and breakfast over there that Susan and I stayed at one time. So we had the weekend to kinda just mosey around. It's amazing.
Oh, it's awesome. I hate the thing that's going on right now with, where they're doing some of the road work, because we went and, and were there and it was just like, oh, we'll just. But my daughter went into one of the houses. A lady was in there, she had the, the boards out and had the quilt stretched across it. And my daughter was sitting, we were all just talking, and my daughter was learning how to quilt. It's a great experience. She's five years old. I mean, she loves to sew.
I, I like what Frank Van Young's doing, the new president, trying to activate some of the spaces and make it more a place that you'll go during, you know, just on a, on a weekend, an odd weekend. You don't have to make it sort of a destination. You go down to see music, you know, Muddy Creek's opening a location there.
Yeah, they're going into the old.
To get people to come back on a regular basis rather than once every four or five years.
I can tell you, you know, when I got elected unopposed for.
It's the only way to go.
Yeah, I know. For president of the Realtors Association, I said, you know, I need to be more present for the group that I represent. So I joined Rinalda House, and I joined Old Salem. The Old Salem one, and the Rinalda Houses too, but the Old Salem was a deal. Because you can go take up to six of your friends with you and go through. And so that's what we did. And I mean, it's, you know, Love Out Loud, I wanna get involved with them. We're gonna have them on and, and do some stuff. But I mean, there are so many opportunities to be involved in your community. And also, at the same time, enjoy the benefits of history and something to do.
So the fact that you, through your position as, you know, the president of WSAR, me as an elected official, it kind of forces you to, to go do these things. And afterwards, you start doing it, you go, why didn't I do this before?
I've lived, okay, so, and, and I've told this story several times, and, and we're gonna have some, several people on from Winston-Salem State, including the athletic director, and I don't know if it's just gonna be her, if it's gonna be some of her team. One of the things is, is, you know, you have two boys, you know, you gotta be a dad, you gotta be, you know, you gotta teach them how to, to do certain things and, and, you know, appreciate a relationship with your wife and stuff like that. I have started to do things with my daughter that are centric to ladies. So we go to lady basketball games. We do things like that, because I have to have female role models in my daughter's life. And I mean, as we do all of these things and get involved, you know, the thing that I will tell you is, is it makes you understand better how people are. It also, with regards to Winston-Salem State, why I started this whole thing, and yes, I do take my ADD medicine, is it was 2012. I've lived here since 77, just as, before I set foot on Winston-Salem State campus.
Hmm, yep.
And then I'm like, why was I not here? So, you know, Winston-Salem State football is about what it was like when I was at Appalachian State.
Yep.
And definitely when you were at Wake Forest. You know, I mean, it's good football.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if, if you want to pay to see something else, go, but it's a block and a half away from, you know, and, or, you know.
Well, and the gateway, and the gateway event for most people is National Black Theater Festival, because they have, they do a bunch of productions on campus. And they're just mind-blowing, state of the art, just, and there's a, and the Anderson Center has been a really good place to hold community events. I go to things there all the time, so it's a real jewel.
Alright, so we've, we've, we're, we're gonna go through a whole bunch of stuff here.
Alright.
So you said you're, you basically said you're running for your third term?
First elected in 2013, re-elected in 2016, and now 2020.
So it, it, it wouldn't be 12 years though, because we had the adjustment.
We had one term that, where the state legislature lined us up with the presidential cycle instead of the off-year.
And how much is that? I mean, that's awesome for you, isn't it? I mean, when you ran and it was an off-year, it's kinda like, how many people really show up, whereas in now? But then you coattail, I mean, if it's a sweep for one party or the other, because you guys are partisan.
So the difference, the difference I found, and I'm the only one who has had a competitive race in 2013 off-year, and then the following year, 2006, or following term, 2016, was the first time we were, we lined up with the president. And I was the only one that had a competitive race. All the other council members didn't. And the difference was, nobody paid attention to the council race. No one wanted to hear what your positions were.
Oh, no, all they wanted to do was vote for whoever. You vote straight ticket, one way or the other.
So you got lots more votes, lots more people voting, but there just wasn't, I didn't get the sense that people were as interested in the issues of what was going on in Winston-Salem. And let's face it, those issues touch your life more on a daily basis than the presidential.
But honestly, you know, something came to mind that, that, to explain it to myself would be, you basically were the commercial on the primetime show. You know, because people were gonna fast-forward it, some may watch it, some may not. But I mean, it was, it was really, it was, it was a secondary thing compared to what else was going on.
The other, the other thing that I think does us a disservice is that, running in a presidential cycle, if you're not the incumbent, you gotta break through so much noise just to be, just to get people to recognize that you're out there. So I.
So you're okay with it now?
No, you know, I'm still going to forums. I'm gonna still knock on doors. I don't have to ask for money. That's a really nice thing. But I'm, it's, it's incumbent on me to get out every four years and, you know, pull myself out there.
The only thing that I learned from the time that I ran for office is, you always run until they tell you that you've won.
Yep.
You're always losing. I ran the first time in Louisville in 1997. I was beating every single candidate by a landslide when the absentee votes came in. I mean, I'm like, holy cow, I'm gonna beat. I lost by 13 votes to Jane Welch. Hey, Jane. So then I got on planning board, then I ran the next time, and then I, you know, I ran, you know, I won by like 30 votes, and then like 60 votes or whatever like that. I get the same number of votes as everybody else on the council, but yeah, I was, I'm number, what? Number six in your program, number one in your heart. But that leads us to the next question. And, you know, it's basically, why the heck you do this? Because I did it two terms, which two years in Louisville, and the phone calls and stuff like that. So, so why are you a council member?
When I told my dad that I was running, my dad had been a council member in a small town I grew up in in New Jersey. He said, have you lost your mind?
You have. Why don't you go ahead and be a broker in charge too?
This job is a little less difficult to be a broker in charge, or city manager.
Right.
So, you know, I've been involved in land use, zoning, development, that kinda stuff since I was in my twenties. Neighborhood, neighborhood advocacy, started up a neighborhood watch, turned it into a neighborhood association, did that for nine years. My wife then took over, and she did it for nine years. So I've always kinda been involved from that point of view. In the, in WSAR, I've always been on committees, think it's really important for young Realtors. Young Realtors get on committees.
Please. I just did a, an orientation the other day, and it's like, I just beg them, just come to one meeting. That's all I need you to do.
I think people, I think people view it as an intrusion into their business life. It brings you business.
No, you get business from it, yeah. Absolutely, absolutely get business from it.
And I, I worked on my predecessor, Wanda Marshals' campaigns, her second, third, and fourth campaigns. So that gives you a taste for, you know, the sort of, for campaign.
She was so nice to me. She's great lady. Bless her heart. Rest in peace.
And so when she knew that she was gonna retire, she took me out to lunch at West End Cafe, another favorite, and said, you know, explain the reasons why she thought I would be good. Why I would be a good fit for the spot. And I said, Wanda, I'm gonna be able to retire, my kids are gonna be out of college. Why would I throw myself back into the frying pan?
Because Susan doesn't want you in the house.
Well, that's, that's true. But, so she said, well, think about it. And I did, and Susan and I talked about it, and it's, I mean, it really does fit a lot of my skill sets. I have a lot of the things that I think are important to be good at the job. If I didn't think I was gonna be good at the job, I wouldn't have.
Alright, so we're going back seven years now?
Yeah.
So folks, as we go, and, and just check out the city website as we're, we're gonna flip the camera around here a little bit. Go to cityofws.org. But as we go to break, you're looking at someone that had never spoken in front of a group before seven years ago. And now you do it all the time. Alright, so show the, stable, if you'll show, cityofws.org. If you'll do that, and then we'll tell you some different sites on there when we come back. So just showed city of Winston-Salem. Now, there's a specific, specific, specifics, search bar that you want us to put in, a search that you want us to put in there, and what's that?
Right, so when you go to the landing page for cityofwinstonssalem.org, search bar is right there prominent.
Right.
Put in census.
Why is that important?
The rules of the game are.
They're gonna know too much. They're gonna tax me. What's going on?
Right, so the rules of the game are, money that gets distributed from Washington DC that we have all paid our taxes into, it gets a portion back out largely based on population. If we, if our population count is accurate, then we get our fair share of money out of DC for transportation, for housing, community development, block grants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If it's not, we get less. So if people don't say that they live here, or don't respond to it, then our count is low and it under-represents us.
So how am I gonna, are you gonna knock on my door like the old way, or is it, am I gonna get an email? How do I know this is coming?
So going, coming around this time, there will be an electronic version. There'll be a mail, something in the mail, and they'll be knocking on doors. So all three methods. There's also an opportunity to volunteer to, to assist in that.
I'm not doing that.
Well, did you knock on doors during, during your campaign?
I didn't have fun doing that.
See, I kinda liked that. After I got myself out the door, you know, started knocking on doors and knocking, I, I liked that.
You mean like a follow-up, I mean, calling a, calling your sphere of influence as a Realtor? Even that, I mean, I know, I know those people, and sometimes that's hard to do. I mean, it's, it's, you know, you don't wanna intrude in people's lives. But you know, I, I think volunteering for census, I got a buddy of mine just retired, and he was talking about, he was trying to get a desk job for Spence's, for the census, and, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's just such a great thing, you know, as, as you've heard me say, we're the, we're the number four sized Realtor Association of the State.
And the best.
There's no question about that. I wanna be the number three. We can take them. We're not that far away from them. And, but it all's, it's, it's numbers. And.
But in a Realtor group here, if we can shift just a little bit, WSAR is an amazing organization, and has been since, since they handed out the big books, every Wednesday at the Elks Club.
The relationship they have, not only across the state, but also with the local government, the, the home builders and stuff like that is, it's not replicated anywhere.
First multiple listing service in, in the country or in the state?
I don't know that one.
But just progressive. I mean, always thinking about how do we use technology? How do we get, how, you know, how are we more efficient? It's just, it's an amazing organization, and it's gone through some changes, you know, over the years, but.
They've, they've had some bad people, you know, this year. But no, what, what I will tell you, this is, and, and I just, I went to lunch with some of the NC Realtor staff, because I say thank you to them, and they're getting, NC is getting ready to celebrate its 100th.
Right.
Which, it's already had, we've already had ours, yeah. And so it's, you know, the census is important. We gotta say that. So go to cityofws.org, search bar census.
Yep, yep.
So let's see, I wanna jump around here a little bit, because.
It's your show.
Nah, whatever. It's, you're, you're the one that, you're the guest, and you're the one that everybody wants to hear. I just have to do this because, you know, you're friends with them too. So you're, you're a friend of Lou's. As I was telling you earlier, I was going back, listening to the show, and I'm like, man, that's some great information. And you and I, you've done our radio show, and just, I mean, just piled on stuff, and we're gonna get to some of that stuff. But in all of your years, we're going back to 19, what, 70, 1980?
1985.
So we go, so, yeah, it's 1985 license, but we go back to 76 of being a Wake Forest fan.
Yep.
Did you ever think that the game that happened a few weeks ago, that you would ever see Carolina lose that bad to Wake Forest?
It was a joy. It was a pleasure.
So I still cannot believe that. And, and speaking of Wake Forest, we then roll into something of, you and your wife are crazy. I mean, you know, I'm gonna say it right here, Susan's an interior designer, but you're crazy. I cannot believe you do this. So you have a home, and then do you have like a granny cottage or, or, or something like that, that was, that when you bought the house was there? Is that what it is, or did you buy the house next door? Or how did this start? Oh, God, here we go.
The first, well, we've always, I mean, since I was, we bought our first investment property when I was 28.
Okay.
It was a five-unit apartment building.
Okay.
So we've always had property that we've bought and restored, mostly in older neighborhoods, mostly craft and style bungalow, that kinda stuff. We've done about 25 of them. So when we bought this house out near Wake Forest, it's, it's on two and a half acres, it's in the middle of woods, great place to raise kids. Really, we're kinda, we were cutting back on our investment portfolio.
Right.
Until a neighbor came and said, I'm moving.
Right.
Would you be interested in buying the house? And we went, nah, you know, we're really not interested in expanding that. Kids are young. And I said, Susan, why, why don't you just go over and see what the house is? And we found out that it was not only a house, but an extra buildable lot. So it turned into a really good deal. We split the lot off, build a house and stuff. So we had that little house. And then the, the other neighbor basically said the same thing. He was moving, would you like to buy it?
They bought my house, so they'll, they'll buy yours, right?
So we had these three houses, two of which were small. One's 830 square feet, the other's 900 square feet. So we went to San Francisco and had trouble finding a place. Finally found something through this new thing called Airbnb.
Yeah, that VRB, Verbo now. That's VRBO, I don't care. It's the Salem Parkway I'm, I'm good with.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't, I'm gonna try not to call it Business 40, but it is VRBO. Yes, right.
So anyway, we discovered Airbnb.
Right.
And, excuse me.
You're fine.
And on the flight back, the kids were off in college. I said, Susan, I said, do you think anybody, there would be any demand in Winston-Salem for our place?
Hence the Wake Forest comment, right?
Airbnb. And so we said, well, you know, there's no, there's no barrier to entry.
Right.
At that time, you didn't, there was not even an upfront fee.
Right.
So we tried it, and it sort of started to become popular.
So you have the, the, the one first house, and basically what happens is, is you advertise it, you put pictures up, you ask people to subscribe, like, make comments? No, you ask them to, to put, you know, that they had a good time and rank it.
Right.
You, when they leave, you either do it, or you pay for someone to clean it up, et cetera, and stuff like that.
We hire, we employ people.
Airbnb takes their cut, you get a check for the rest.
Airbnb also collects sales tax and accommodation tax.
And then sends you a 1099 and to end with the sales. Okay, yeah, and so.
So what we do is.
It must've worked out.
So we, both these small houses were year-round rentals.
Right.
And as we started to rent our house more often, we converted one of them to Airbnb so that we could have that on the market, but we could choose which one to stay in. Then the other one, we put that on the market, and then we bought two more to do that.
But then you did the crazy thing.
What's that?
You put your own personal house.
Oh, yeah, no, that was the first one. That was our first one.
So you put your own personal house, so it's like, hey, Susan, we're staying down the street. And then you actually had it, and I know this, in the last, I don't know how, when the earliest was, but we've talked about this, you've had it to where you are homeless and have no place to stay. Because everything's rented.
When everything's rented, we leave town. Or, well, actually, we've stayed in a hotel room here.
Right, yeah.
So.
Go to Camden, you know, the.
This morning, we left the little house next door.
Right.
And packed up and moved downtown to our, to condo we just bought down there, a little condo in West End Boulevard.
Right.
And it was, it's just like, it's routine now. We're, we're gypsies.
I mean, have you got the, have you got the tub or something, and that's what your toiletries are in? You just carry that with you in the back of the car?
We're pre-packed.
You are a Realtor, yeah.
Yeah, we're pre-packed.
That's the greatest thing that I did, was when we bought a, we bought a condo up in Banner Elk.
Yeah.
And I took everything that I own here and put it into a container.
Yeah.
And then replace the stuff here. So when I go up there, I don't have to take anything. It's all there. That's so nice.
But we have started to convert back to year-round.
Okay.
The management side of it is much, much more intense than just managing year-round rentals.
Okay.
We like to travel.
I do realize though, that there's some 20, I mean, you're looking at, if the number's correct, of 20 to 30% greater in the short-term rentals. You know, you, you might get 1,500 to 2,000 on a, on a short term, where you might only get 800 to 1,000 on a long term.
We did the math, and there is, we figured it was a fairly small hit, or a smaller amount of revenue.
You have your staff too.
Um, exactly, because you, you're paying for cleaning, you're paying all this other stuff. So we figure we're taking a little bit of a haircut going back to year-round, but the management level is just so less intense. And Susan has a rheumatoid arthritis issue, so that side of it has become, that's her job more, more than it is mine. So it just made sense to do that. And, but.
It works.
It works.
And I will tell you, folks, tell your friends to vote for Jeff, because Jeff has been a huge proponent of this on council when it's been brought up. And, you know, he's, he's pushing to protect private property rights. If you own a home and you wanna rent it out, look what it's done for people that own homes in High Point. They are paying two, three, four months of their house payment by a week or two.
Right.
Two times a year. I mean, and I appreciate you protecting that, and that's, that's awesome that you do that. So short-term rentals is great. You talked about restoring some of this stuff. So you are a part-time, what do you, fiddling historic preservationist, restoration? And I mean, no, you, you like to restore the homes you buy, but also you've been a big proponent of that for our city too.
Yep. My dad was a wood shop teacher, high school wood shop teacher, and so I grew up.
Glued all it together, sanded it down, made my mom the cutting board.
So I grew up working with him in, in the construction trades, doing stuff. And so when I graduated Wake with a degree in econ and having some construction background, I thought, wow, real estate is the perfect sort of mashup of those two things.
Right.
And so we pretty fearlessly started buying houses when we were late twenties and fixing them up, not realizing it was probably, you know.
Pre-flipping.
It was not, the flipping term did not exist. So, you know, in the Holly Avenue neighborhood, down that area behind the Sawtooth Center, the Milton Road Center, we did 10 properties in there.
Right.
A bunch in West Salem.
Right.
One in the West End, one at Sherwood Forest. So just, you know, kind of all over Tampa, mostly in neighborhoods where our finished product was selling for 100 to 125,000 dollars. And that's done national register standards, you know, using tax credits, historic tax credits and all that stuff.
It's interesting you say that term, because now, the hottest topic, National Association of Realtors, Local Association of Realtors, we have, I can tell you this, I, I have a young lady who is in town. I do not know what the type of visa it is, but it's the something one. She is from China. She's here with Wake Forest, taking some classes. She's wanting to buy a place. And her investment would be that she'd buy the place, live in it. Her boyfriend has already bought a place over there at, near the ballpark, the West, the Fourth Project there, where the West End Coffee Places and all that.
West End Village.
Yeah, right. Thank you for the term. Right, so he, he has a place in there. But what they're doing is kind of like what you and Susan did, and it's. Right, so he he has a place in there, but what they're doing is kind of like what you and Susan did and it's like, hey, we noticed a need, let's do it. So they're buying the place and then what their goal is, is to rent them to other Chinese students that are coming over because speak the language, can put to put together the package, the concierge type of thing of saying, hey, this is what you want to do, where you want to go. Showed her a Deacon Ridge, ninety two thousand. Six offers, seven offers under contract. Went and showed the other one that just came on the market, ninety two thousand, a second floor unit at Deacon Ridge, I just am telling you, that was listed at ninety two thousand. Was on the market, she called me about it, we scheduled a showing for that evening, I showed it, I called the agent that night to say, the the next day to say I was sending an offer and she goes, oh, it was under contract yesterday morning.
Yeah.
And I'm like, oh, it's under contract, she goes, well, I gotta take it to sign, so you know what I did? They ain't signed anything, you gotta present all offers, it'll be in your box in a minute, and she called me back and said they went with the other offer, but. So she has tried to buy, oh, gosh, what, if I'm over near where old Vestal Buick used to be, Pontiac Buick down there near Cherry, near Whittaker Park. And you know, there's those, the, there's that apartment, I mean, there's that complex back in there. No, it's down lower, it's down lower, closer to that intersection. I showed her one in there, seven, ten, seven, eight, nine, ten offers. So if I want to buy a home under a hundred thousand dollars, what's happening?
Okay, so we are where we are and I'm gonna digress here a little bit.
You're fine.
The financial meltdown in two thousand eight, nothing was built from two thousand eight through two thousand fourteen, fifteen, I mean, literally nothing.
Stopped.
Nobody built anything.
Yeah, in fact, I was talking to a banker and they said there were only two people, there were only two builders they'd loaned money to at that point.
Yep. And we were still growing at about one percent. So that's roughly two thousand people per year in in population growth.
Right.
So from two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, that's twelve thousand people that had no new accommodations built for them.
Right.
You know, I hear, I have a son in Charlotte, a son in Raleigh, and I hear Charlotte has an influx of seventy five people per day.
Right.
And I think.
And that's a low.
And that immediately to me says, there need to be at least sixty housing units finished and ready to occupy every day if it's not gonna affect pricing.
Right.
And that's just not happening, so pricing goes up, econ major.
Right.
Supply, demand, so we built nothing in Winston Salem for twelve years and population grew. And so when people said, I think I'll go look for a house again.
Right.
They were having, you know, you have to elbow other people out of the way to to get there, so everybody's coming back to the market and you just, there's, there's, there's more demand than there is supply.
Well, they are building a lot of apartments, but and and people are like, oh, there's apartments everywhere, well. The no longer blank, blank innovation quarter as of the other day.
Yeah.
So Wake Forest, you know, has their school there.
Right.
A lot of those apartments are for those students.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, if that's happening, that's not satisfying what you and I are talking about still too.
Well, it it impacts it.
Right. And they're like, before they even are finished building, they put the sign up and they're, I had a friend of mine go to try and get one and they're sold out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
So the metric that developers, and I guess more importantly that lenders use. Is that a healthy downtown market should be able to support five percent of the metro population.
Okay.
So our metro population is Forsyth County.
Right.
Three hundred and sixty five thousand.
Okay.
You know, that works out to almost seven thousand people live in downtown.
Right.
We have about, we have less than four thousand living there.
Okay.
So there's a lot of headroom, the banks are gonna continue to lend, developers are gonna continue to build.
There's more people down there.
It's it's not, it's still a fairly low number. The West End Station that just sold.
Right.
Was a great deal, there's a lot of money out there looking for.
Right.
For apartment deals, so they made a bunch of money, but in order for that deal to close, they had to get to a certain occupancy rate. And they were leasing up ahead of schedule, ahead of what they thought. But a buyer came along and said, I'll buy this if you're this full.
Right.
So they starting cut, they started cutting checks to people to move in.
Right.
To breach that threshold, to have enough.
Kind of like the car dealer buys buys the car for himself at the end of the month to hit that number so they can get the bonus, yeah.
And so, I mean, that was, to me, that was a really smart move on their part.
No, it's, I mean, what's better, a million dollars or spend thirty thousand, you know?
It made several million dollars on the sale, so that was a, that was a good deal for them. So everything that has been built has leased up ahead of schedule, almost everything that's been out there long enough is at capacity. What's the one at Fourth Street, the original, the Nissen Building?
Right, yeah.
Nissen Building has been, had a waiting list.
Do you remember how the Nissen, the Nissen Building was built with the, oh, we're gonna have a, Chris Hilton and his wife Pam were in the Nissen Building because they wanted to buy that condo and then they said, we're not gonna sell them.
Yeah. Well, and I thank Lou for that, Lou was, Lou was heavily involved in that deal, the city council before me stepped up to that deal. As big a supporter as I have been in downtown since the mid eighties, I didn't think there were a hundred and forty people who wanted to live on Fourth Street.
Right.
It turns out there were.
Yeah, and a line, so I keep looking at it, so let's do this, let's show the website, we're gonna go to cityofwinstonsalem.org, we'll go ahead and put the census search in for you. And we're gonna put that page up here so you can see what we're talking about, this is where you want to go and get the information about the census and then we're gonna come back and talk about some more things. And the reason why I showed that here at that break is, is you know, census, that's the other thing. That gives you realistic numbers to then still put into that formula of affordable housing.
Yes.
I know you guys work on poverty, you work on all these things, but if we know the numbers, who are downtown, then we can build those.
Yeah, you can't build policy without good data behind it.
Correct, and the other thing is, is there are now incentives to developers to, yeah, you can build the Taj Mahal. But if you do that, we'll cut parking out if you put this many affordable, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that's coming, I know you guys are always working on it, in fact, I'm sure there's probably some committee that is studying this, but. Keep going on affordable housing, you know, bus transportation, all that kind of stuff, because.
Well, so one, one thing I want to sort of come back to with a conversation around what a lot of people are critical of and that's the these high, these high dollar apartments and they're they're expensive.
They are furnished too, though.
Twelve to fourteen hundred dollars a month, which, you know, people say, well, who can afford that? There are people lined up who can afford it and choose to live there, that's where they want to live, but what you gotta think about is that person who's renting a fourteen hundred dollar apartment. If that apartment didn't exist for them to live in, they'd go take something else in the market, right? And take one less, that'd be one less unit for people, they would go rent a thousand dollar unit. And that person who would have to compete for the thousand dollar unit, they'd go take away an eight hundred dollar unit, so. Additional product on the market at whatever price point works for everybody, it's not necessarily, you know, common sense, but it does supply, it does pull people up to the top who would normally.
What's what's the number that they tell us for every hundred dollars a price, you lose a thousand dolla, you lose a thousand people that can buy the home or something like that? I think that's what they told us. Um, so. You know, I'm the SPC for Senator Lowe and, you know, he looked at me one day, he goes, what's affordable housing? And, you know, I I I always go back and say, I kind of feel like that affordable housing is the same as the definition that the Supreme Court came up with pornography, you know it when you see it. No one can define what affordable housing is.
I'm gonna take a shot at it.
They're getting closer with, if you're working a forty hour week and 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 this type of thing, is is it around about six hundred bucks a month in rent, is that what it is or what what is it now?
I haven't, I don't, I can do the math after we talk about this, so I think there are two definitions of affordable housing.
Right.
One is big A affordable.
Right.
And big A affordable is housing that people's incomes are so low that the the market will not take care of it.
They need help.
That's gotta be federally funded or state funded, that's the Peters Creek Parkway budget in project.
Right, and I'm, before you get that, I want to tell you something I heard at Love Out Loud, when I was at that, were you able to make that?
I was not there.
Okay, that's right, you, you, I remember, we talked about that.
Yeah, yeah.
So in this video, this guy says, I need for you all to realize, if you're born poor in Winston Salem, you die poor in Winston Salem. And so that's the big A, we have to get affordable housing so that people have the same benefits that everyone else has. And give a hand up rather than a hand out.
So you have to have a nice place to live, a secure place to live.
Right.
Right? That's on a bus line.
Right.
Or some other form of mass transit, which around here is, you know, buses are, and.
Tesla's not building underground tunnels, are they?
Come on, what are those things called, anyway? So so we'll come back to that a little bit, but so the other form of, the other affordable housing is little A affordable.
Right.
So you're big A and little A, little A is for our firefighters, our policemen.
Right.
Our, the guy who.
Teachers.
Teachers.
Right.
The folks who bag your groceries.
Right.
You know, just, there's a tremendous number of jobs out there that are, you know, decent wages, but they don't allow you to spend a thousand dollars a month. Right, you know, thirty percent of your income should be spent, you know, that's the metric that everybody likes to use and with this additional demand, it's just skewing prices up. That said, we are still the most affordable of any of the large cities in North Carolina, which doesn't mean it's affordable, but we're the most affordable of any of them.
It's not a compliment.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a fact, but it's not a compliment, we, what I will tell you is, I'm I'm working with a client and she came in the other day and I did, you know, the buyer consult, I've I've never really done one of those, it's normally, people call me and go, hey, I want to buy a house and you go in the car, but. We went through, talked about the whole process and stuff and she worked for one of the county things, departments and was like, you know, I'm I get paid okay and I've gone to this because I'm getting paid better, she said, but, you know, I'm. So I had a house and when my renewal came up, they raised my rent a hundred bucks. And then now it's, they're wanting to raise it again and it's like, I'm gonna go buy a house because of that, well, guess what price range she's in? She had the three Deacon Ridge properties tagged and I'm like, you would have been number eight in all those, I mean, it's, we've got a problem. And I don't know how to address it other than we got us, we gotta get, we gotta encourage our builders to build more.
We had a really good panel discussion the other night at the Salt Box.
Right.
Up on Ivy Avenue and it was, it was, the homeless community was represented, Housing Authority was represented, Dee Dee Adams and I were both there, Mike Kelly, the developer was there, Richard Angino, an affordable housing developer was there. Just this really good group of people and it's, it's an amazingly complex deal. And so I was asked to wrap it up and I stood up and said, you know, we are not gonna find a silver bullet that solves affordable housing, we're looking for silver shotgun pellets.
Right.
Nibble away at it, do what we can, but the budget in, the city put in six hundred thousand dollars, which is not a small amount of money.
Right.
The county put in six hundred thousand dollars, which is rare for them to put money into a housing project, so that gave.
And even more rare because it's inside the city limits of Winston Salem, which is, you know.
Correct, our turf.
Right, yeah.
So that gave the group enough to purchase property and tear it down.
Right.
They still need, they still need ten million dollars to build seventy two units there that are that are gonna rent for three hundred bucks a month.
And and Lou was, Lou was very frank about how, I mean, it like basically took a slide rule and an abacus to get this to work. I mean, you couldn't even do it on a calculator, I mean, it was just crazy how, you know, how is this going to impact it?
So that project has to compete for what are called LITZI, Low Income Tax Credit Projects.
Right.
There's only X amount of dollars and there are tremendous number of deals trying to get that, those dollars and in Forsyth County, there were two awarded out of ten that had a perfect score. Budget in was one of those that didn't get funded. So it, the deal was as good as it can get.
Right.
Hit all these metrics and it didn't get funded. Cause there's not enough state funding for it. So the city of Winston Salem, the private market isn't gonna build, we, we can't ask our taxpayers to come up with the kind of money that's gonna take to fix those problems.
Right.
They're just, it's too big, so it's gotta come from the state or the feds.
Well, I don't know if you know this, so I I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you a secret. You need to mark something on your calendar, it's May nineteenth.
Okay.
That is, you're going to get some information about May nineteenth.
Okay.
Via the Winston Salem Regional Association of Realtors, Lawrence Yun's gonna be downtown.
Really?
Yes. So I may ask you to maybe throw some, some.
Absolutely.
ED information to us, but.
Absolutely.
Folks, Lawrence Yun is the chief economist for the National Association of Realtors and we're having him come to our membership meeting and talk and, you know, focusing on Winston Salem.
We can talk econ.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, I know that, yeah, I don't understand half the things he says, all I do is start laughing when he says, well, how long's Billy gonna live with mom and dad? That number's gone down to six years now after college, but, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna see him in a few weeks and get a little promo video together with him, but he, he's coming to town and, you know. We're so blessed in Winston Salem right now with some things that have happened, so, you know, there's the merging of the two to become the, our, finally, our Chamber of Commerce is working more in economic development. They've always been a side partner, but now with the two of those groups merging, that's helped out. The Realtors have been a sideline player, but we're trying to pump that up, we're blessed in that Jake Cashin, Jake is Mr. Brooke Cashin, as we call him. His wife is, I mean.
And he considers that a compliment.
Yeah, he does, his wife is a successful Realtor at Allen Tate and Jake is chair of the North Carolina Realtors Economic Development Committee. So when I came in as president, I'm like, well, we don't have an economic development committee and I want to try and do this crazy thing with Lawrence Yun, let's, let's create one, so we, it's called a presidential advisory group, they let me just appoint people, it's kind of, yeah, yeah, that was the dumbest thing ever.
That's scary.
Yeah, yeah, but he asked me if he'd chair that, so he and Caitlin Ellerwall are the, are the co-chairs. And and pointed some really cool people on that, but so that's why Lawrence Yun's coming. Economic development is, I mean, it is the linchpin of of everything, I mean, it is, it's what keeps everything from falling and and. It, it's just one of those things that we have to be conscious of and so with regards to what the chamber's doing and and, you know. All of that stuff, where is the council on economic development? Because I know you guys have been criti- criticized for, we gave money to the ballpark, yeah, that that worked out really well, we loaned Dell money, huh, that worked out even better.
I'd do that deal all over again.
But yeah, yeah, I'll do that anytime, I'll loan you some money, you bring some people here, pay them and then give us back everything. But so where are you all at with economic development and it it doesn't seem that it's that big of a partisan issue with you all, it's, it seems like everybody's, yeah, so.
The council, I think, across the board is supportive of using tax dollars to to bring additional jobs. And to grow our workforce so that we can have workers ready for companies who are looking for workers. Charlotte and Raleigh, Raleigh right now.
Go ahead and say that as you're talking about, you see it right there, I wrote it down, cause that's huge and I'm so proud of you guys for doing that.
We'll come back to that, we'll boomerang that. I have a son who lives in Raleigh's, but if you think about the triangle, you've got Duke, Carolina State and then, you know, several other good sized schools.
Meredith's Peace, all of them, yeah, right.
You've got to, you have over a hundred thousand undergraduate students in that geography, that's what companies want is talent.
Right.
We are blessed to have Wake, Winston State, we've got about twenty six thousand here in Winston.
We have four.
Five.
Five.
If you call.
Salem.
Piedmont International.
Piedmont International, Wake, UNC SA and.
Winston Salem State.
And then my alma mater, SU, you know, Winston Salem State. So, I mean, that's, so.
And I consider Forsyth Tech to be one of those.
Well, that's, and that's the other, I mean, Forsyth Tech.
Yeah.
Was it, was it Bush that came here the first time and started it all and then Obama was huge here too, twice? I mean, we are so freaking lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we had that history of Forsyth Tech, Gary Green did a tremendous job sort of keeping them nimble enough to react to an opportunity to to train people for specific jobs. And then the new chancellor, Spriggs, I think is doing a, doing an excellent job as well, so the city has committed some money, we're gonna, we're trying to buy down tuition there, we're buying down tuition.
So what is, so Stabler's, you know, fourteen or whatever here, when he, when he's going, he's homeschool, but he's in the county. All right, so being in the county, is it true now that he, he has two years of of Forsyth, I mean, he he's, what is, what is it, it's, there's. Is it, is it just city, what 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 is the program?
I'm pretty sure it's countywide.
So it's countywide and you get to go there for free? Or close?
I'm not as well versed on the parameters as I might should be, but.
Right, but no, no, it's fine.
It's a significant investment, even making Forsyth Tech more affordable for more people.
Right, yeah.
And not, not just books and tuition, but some help getting there, some help with childcare, things like that, because a lot of what Forsyth Tech is retraining. So people whose industries have changed out from under them need to come back in and find out, okay, what's the next thing I need to learn to.
Right, yeah, and, you know, I I think she's still there, Shereen McLean is a friend of mine with the Sugar Center for, whenever anyone says to me, he says, well, what kind of house does Sugar build? I said, well, there's a facility at Forsyth Tech that he basically sponsors that if a woman is divorced, is, you know, getting out of a a relationship due to, you know, whatever. Single mom, death, all these things, she can go there and their counselor's specific to understanding what she needs to do to get up, running and supporting her and her family. And Grover put some money towards that, so that's what I can tell you about it, cause no one cares how much you know until they know how much you care. So, but Forsyth Tech, I I went there some, I enjoyed that, I got my masters at Winston Salem State and, like I said, two thousand twelve, first time I set foot on campus was to start to get my masters, I mean, it's, it's awesome.
So, but it it, I think, doesn't, people don't think about us being a college town because those are separate, you know, entities, but the, some total of it is, there's a lot of talent in this town.
A lot, and I mean, you know, we, we always say, what is it, Amadeus, you know, who was also, he was also in Animal House, that's how I know him. But, you know, you go, if you watched The The Preacher's Wife in True Blood, she's from here, the, we. The weeds with Mary Elizabeth, she, she's been through here. You know, no one knew this, but if you go into, what's the name of the, uh?
Meridian.
You know Meridian?
Yep.
Down there where it is.
Yep.
All right, so Dan Marino, I believe owned a, owned a unit in there.
Yes.
All right, so he goes into the bar at Meridian, and they just opened it up. You know the two, I mean, it was like three guys that came from different, I mean, they were working at a restaurant, and they all pulled together to form, and it's a great restaurant.
Oh, absolutely.
So he goes, where's your TV? And they're like, um, well, uh, Mr. Marino, we, we, we're just getting started or whatever. He goes, what's your name? Give me your address. So Dan's working with Samsung, sends him a TV so he can watch football when he's down there to visit his son.
I never heard that.
So he comes in after it's installed, and he goes, they sent you the wrong TV. It's not as big as I wanted. And they're like, we're fine with this TV. Are you sure you're fine with the TV? Cause I'll get him to bring you another TV. And it's just like.
That's great.
Yeah. So, I mean, all this talent that comes through Winston.
Yeah.
I mean, what was that, uh, did I see, was it Susan Sarandon was at?
Yep, Crankies.
Crankies, what the heck?
Mike Bloomberg was at Foothills.
Foothills, yeah. Campus gas wasn't big enough. Holy cow.
They were expecting fifty people. They got about eight hundred.
Really?
Yeah.
That's crazy. I saw something on the news, uh, this morning when I was getting ready. They're, they're talking about, um, who the next candidate's gonna be to drop out of the Democratic side. And so it's like, you know, this is who it's gonna be. It could be or whatever. And I'm like, man, you know, it's.
My standard, my standard response at this point in a po- of politics conversation is to say, I, I worry about local.
Yeah, I'll tell you honestly, if, if you talk to me for about thirty minutes, you would probably think you knew which party I voted for, and then it'd be, oh, wow, really? All right, so, um, we've talked a little bit about downtown stuff, so I wanna go back to this. So I told you I got a place up in, in, uh, Banner Elk that we go to occasionally. One of the greatest things in the world is, is I pull in to a parking space in downtown Boone, which has worse parking than, than Winston. I get out, and I immediately reach over into my, I don't have any coins. What am I gonna do? You know what I do? I slide my credit card in because no one carries cash anymore. So I am asking you, honorable council member, when the heck are we gonna get individual metered credit cards? Or the group to come back to it? I want them.
I knew I could bring this back to Monty Python and the Holy Grail. The Holy Grail for me is to be able to pull up to a parking space and pay with my phone.
Right.
With a quarter, with cash, or with a credit card. And I was just in a small city in Georgia, much smaller than Salem, and they had functioning multi-use mirrors throughout downtown. So we're working on it.
All right.
I have.
I would think it would be a little bit more expensive than these small towns, uh, stuff, in the sense of number of, that you have to buy.
We are by far.
Right.
The cheapest place to park of any city of any size, probably in North and South Carolina. We're twenty-five cents an hour. So what twenty-four, what being so cheap does is it allows people to pu- park on the street and run down to feed the meter and run back up.
It, it goes back to the big A thing too, because what happens is, is I can go to a job interview downtown, and I can park on the street and put the quarter in rather than have to park in the deck, and it's, it's different things like that.
So you get, you get office workers who are taking spaces away from retail.
Right.
Customers, and that hurts the local retailers.
Right.
The, what you'll hear when you, if you survey people, and you ask, what, what do we need more of in terms of parking downtown? They say, we, we need more free parking. There's a book out called The High Cost of Free Parking. It's a great read. Free parking doesn't allocate resources the way they should be allocated.
Right.
Um, most cities our size or larger in North Carolina are a dollar and a quarter to a dollar fifty an hour. We're twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
So it's a, it creates a disincentive.
Well, what we're doing right now is, is if you go and valet your car overnight at one of the hotels, it's about what you're paying to park, self-park in other cities.
Right.
You know, there's, I mean, so we're even there.
Right.
Um, you said the high cost of free parking, the, um, it reminded me of just a stupid thing. Do you know what the most expensive thing that a restaurant serves? Glass of water.
Why is that?
They don't charge for it. They got resources. They gotta get it there. They gotta clean the glasses and all that kinda stuff. It's the most expensive thing because they don't charge for it.
So that's like a Freakonomics thing. You can read Freakonomics. It's a great, great book.
Appalachian graduate helped write that book.
Steve W.
Yeah. Um, so credit card meters, then, then, do you have plans for parking?
Yeah, we're, we are, staff started to pull together some stuff, and, uh, we've been talking about this for years. And honestly, it's such a hot topic. It is such a hotly debated topic that I have been shying away from because wh- whatever decision we come up with is gonna be wrong in the eyes of some segment of population, and it'll be a flame war.
Well.
But it needs, it's just, it's a point where it needs to be done. So it will roll out here fairly soon. It needs to be modern, it needs to be fair, and it needs to be efficient. Those are my three goals.
Yeah, and CJ was on a few weeks ago and, and was like, you know, people don't realize the best deal there is, is if you come to one of our games, like a Sunday game or something, that lot's free.
Yeah.
So you park there and just walk. And so, yeah, so, um, so with that parking and with all these hotels, well, who's gonna stay in them? And Airbnbs and VRBOs, um, man, you know, uh, I was at it, I bet you didn't even know this. The National Rod Building, um, convention is in Winston Salem.
Really?
It was the weekend of Valentine's Day. Yeah, it's at the Bencky Finch Center. It's the whole downstairs. You go in there and learn, and, and.
Can you just walk in off the street?
Yeah, it's like fifteen bucks, yeah. Yeah, and, um, and you, uh, they have blanks there. They, they have classes. They have, uh, um, uh, fly fishing demonstrations and stuff like that. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's so, you know, uh, and he was, he's been asked to bring it to other places. He goes, no, Winston's good for me. But what, what about conventions and our visitors? Cause I know, you know, Homecoming Winston Salem State, Homecoming Wake Forest, uh, National Black Theater Festival, uh, what's that little?
River Run.
Yeah, what's that little film place? Yeah, yeah, River Run, you know? I mean, all of those things are huge for us.
Right.
And you know where River Run came from? Did you ever see the original Men in Black? The guy that played the bug?
Yeah.
You know, that's the guy that owned the festival that we brought from.
From Brevard?
From Brevard, yeah.
Really?
It's him and his dad owned it.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I had, uh, was it Andrew, I think, that used to be here? I had him on, and he talked about it.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
But no, so what are we doing for that?
So in preparation for, well, in conjunction with looking forward to the Business Forty shutdown, because we all had a ten year look at that.
Right.
Even though some people, when it happened, said, what do you mean you're taking it out of service? Anyway, in preparation, partly in preparation for that, we knew we had to up our game with the convention center.
Right.
It was getting a little doggy, couldn't get wifi. It was, you know, not, not that great. So we ponied up bond money, Citizens of Winston Salem, said, let's, let's do it, and put nineteen to twenty million dollars in it. And we have gone from booking events six months in advance to now three to four years in advance. The response to the, to what's been done to the convention center.
It's a beautiful city. Love it.
Been just incredible. It's busy all the time. It brings people into town. Winston acts as kind of the Northwest gateway, or a gateway to the Northwest. So when people wanna come do big city things, from the counties sort of in the Northwest part of the state, they come to Winston. They come here to shop. They come here to go to the ballet, you know, all that stuff. And so that draws a certain amount of convention business, but it also draws, you know, kinda day trippers or overnight trippers. People come to Winston now, like, ten years ago, people were starting to go to Asheville.
Well, I mean, we're many Ashvilles, what we're trying to get.
Not as weird.
Right, not as weird.
Yeah. Our housing prices are not as bad.
Right, oh yeah, that's why we bought in Banner Elk. Um, and then the other thing is, uh, you know, the, the brewery, someone's, um, somebody posted something online that's like, oh, another brewery. Hey, you know what? Those are jobs. People are gonna come for it, you know? Go to, go to Foothill's Sexual Chocolate Release and tell me that that's not a wonderful thing to have here.
And if those businesses are making money.
Right, yeah.
What's the problem? I'm ha- I'm happy to let dogs back in.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's, it, it is, uh, it, it is crazy, and, you know, there's, there's other things that a lot of people like. I mean, doesn't Tony Atala have, uh, a convention here like every other year or something like that? Um, you know, we have, uh, and, and.
So there, all these conventions that come, you never, I mean, as the general public, you don't know who they are, but it's just a, you know, wide variety of different organizations.
Now, I know you do watch the chat, and I appreciate that, so please like and subscribe, people. But, um, I don't know, did you see what CJ said? Were you, did you, have you watched?
I haven't seen his.
Okay. So I think that, I think the, uh, the stadium is within a hundred days of three sixty-five. So you have the games plus like two hundred or something. I mean, it's, they're, they're getting close to.
Yes.
An event there every day.
Which is smart because it's a big facility.
Oh, I love that upstairs, the Flow Club to have an event there. We've had, uh, Realtor events there, so.
It's a great spot.
All right, um, uh, two questions.
Yep.
Left. One is, and you didn't know this one was coming, tell people about appointments and why they need to get involved. The mayor hit on this, so I know you're gonna push it probably to the mayor, but I mean, how many, how many openings do we have right now? It's crazy, isn't it?
We have thirty-seven boards and commissions.
Okay.
And so when somebody comes to me and says, well, why didn't I know about this? It's important to me. I say to them, were you aware that there's a, an advisory group that comes to us with recommendations before we vote on stuff on that topic? So there's tons of those available, and, you know, it's, it's kinda like what I was talking about before, with, as a Realtor, to get involved in committees, this lets you engage and really helps shape the public policy that goes on in Winston Salem. We're at this nice point. We're a big town, small city.
Right.
You can get to know your council members.
The largest small town in America.
You can get to know your mayor. I mean, we are accessible, and you can actually influence public opinion by engaging in these things. Appearance Commission, and there's just all these different things that everybody's gonna have an affinity that lines up with one of these boards and commissions.
Right.
Um, so if you go on our website, cityofwinston Salem dot org, put in boards and commissions, you, you'll come to a list of things that, uh, that you can volunteer for and get a tremendous amount back from, um, you know, as well as help the city.
Right, perfect.
Our, my toughest job as a council member is knowing what people out in the city want.
Right.
That's a, that, to me.
Cause the more, majority of your calls are trash.
Speeders.
Speeders and, um, what was the third?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, right, yeah.
Right, so I know that, and I'm.
Okay.
We work on it all the time.
That's an easy phone call. All right, so the last question, I try to sum up with this is, is, um, and you know, again, thank you for being here.
My pleasure. This is fun.
Every time we get together, I, I learn something about our, our town. Um, I tell people to vote for you, but still vote for Jeff, even though he's running unopposed, so he knows.
I need at least two votes, yeah.
Well, I, I, I've talked to Susan. She's, she's, she's on the fence.
She's solid.
Yeah, she's, she's on the fence. Um, but, uh, so I like to ask the question before we go is, where are we and where do you see Winston Salem going? So where, where, you know, what do you, what do you want?
Yeah.
Okay?
We're in the middle of a transition that's been going on since I got here, of losing large-scale corporations, manufacturing. And we're in the middle, I think, of successfully moving towards a more entrepreneurial, small business base. Winston's always been a really good place to grow, start and grow a business. I mean, Wachovia started here, Reynolds started here, and all these big companies started and grew in, in this, in this arena. We have a very robust startup group and, and, and ecosystem. And it's not real public facing, but it's easy to sort of plug into Winston Starts, Flywheel, Venture Cafe, just, those are all.
Flow Now, um, and then, uh, the, the one over that's the old, uh, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs that, uh, uh, Winston Salem State's involved, the Enterprise Center.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, those are all incubators.
They're all incubators, and they're all suc- being, they're all successful. So they're starting to turn out, you know, successful graduates who are getting seed funding, who are bringing people into town. That stuff grows slowly, but it's been remarkable that Winston Salem is now thought of on the stage, at least nationally, if not internationally, as a player. Getting that mind share is huge, cause now it's easier to go out and recruit people coming in. So David Mounts, Reynolds, I mean, they, Haynes, they want to recruit na- in national, international quality talent. And unless you have that sort of ecosystem going on, or that support system that's gonna support the breweries and the cool restaurants, and the great music scene that's coming back to us. I mean, Ram Cat has done just.
Right, phenomenal, yeah.
Um, unless you have that ecosystem, young people are not gonna wanna live here. And so those things all, or they're coming together. It's a slower process than we'd all like to see, but the results are starting to show up. And that, I think, positions us really well. I think second-tier cities, I take that term as a compliment. I don't really want.
I don't wanna be Charlotte.
I have a son in Char- son in Raleigh. I like to go down there and visit, but I don't wanna put up with all the negative externalities of that size of a city. I think the Greenville, South Carolina, is the Ashvilles, the Winston Saloms.
Chattanooga.
Chattanooga.
I mean, they're great places.